Five thirty P M. This is the city council meeting for December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. It should be starting in about sixty seconds or less. And as soon as it does, we will join them in progress. It is twenty-two degrees. It is definitely cold outside. Please be careful when you are out and about. Also, Kitsap Regional Library will be closed tomorrow. So please govern yourselves accordingly. And as I said, we will start here momentarily. I would play some music, but as when I did that last time, it started immediately. So we'll just wait a second. Because, well, Murphy's Law. The update from the Kitsap Regional Library. For the next couple of days, multiple weather events are predicted, sub-freezing temperatures coupled with slick roads, black ice, freezing rain, and more more snow predicted for Friday in multiple areas of the county. Out of extreme caution, all branch locations will remain closed for the remainder of the week. The library is already scheduled to close. December twenty-third.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Council. So I hope you've been staying warm and enjoying the holiday season and staying safe. So just have a quick slide. It's gonna be a snow, snow update. So I don't know how you all commuted. I hope you was relatively safe. I use my normal commute method, which is walking. So this, this jacket's kind of helpful on days like this. Especially when, when you're out walking, you always see things. You wanna, you wanna be sure you're seen while you're looking around. Very good.
It came a little early, earlier than we expected.
I'll tell you what, I can, let's go ahead and get started and when Hans and Mike have this ready to go, they just put this up on screen, but just a, no, just a little briefing on what, what we've been doing this week. So Monday at four A M., the crews were called in to apply salt and brine into the primary and secondary roads. And that was in preparation for freezing weather. Twenty-four hour operations were initiated. On Tuesday, twenty-four hour operations continued, allowing a snow and slush to remove ahead of the deep freeze. So and there was a also the beginning of a application of sand and salt mix. And that occurred Tuesday. Wednesday, today, twenty-four hour operations continue. Primary and secondary routes are constantly being monitored. And there's a focus on hilly areas and residential streets. We, the reports coming back from the drivers are that there's a, most of the primary and secondary are done. But we are taking inputs from folks. You know, just because there's going to be spots where there's been melt, there has been melt and then refreeze. So we'll come back as needed. Anticipate keeping a twenty-four, twenty-four seven type of tempo till about midday on Friday. That's just a little bit of what I was just talking about. So the crews are now in residential neighborhoods working. My personal observation is there's, that there's more, obviously more work to do. Just even on my trip down here, we're noticed a few areas, but that's, that's to be expected. And that's where we're gonna stay. Working with, with the director and of course, the street operations will, will stay on it. Next slide. We're getting close. So this is just a snapshot of what, what we've done over the years since we've, since Snowmageddon in two thousand and eighteen. And you can just read for yourself the new purchases and then the features that were added with each of our purchases to, to add, to put more plows on the road, essentially to put more plows on the road. And there seems to be, you know, I don't know why, but a lot of folks are willing to step up and get that extra training to drive the plower. So which is, which is awesome. So we've got plenty of city employees that have actually taken the extra training. And now we have enough folks to keep, continue with this around the clock service. And we'll just, I'll keep this here just for your, you know, review afterwards. And Council, it's been a pleasure working with you this year. And I just wanna wish you and anybody who's watching tonight, peace and joy as you celebrate the holidays and a healthy and prosperous new year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sending you, Mr. Mayor. Now we will go to the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Goodnow. Tonight, we're gonna have a little bit of a different consent agenda breakdown. Due to potential conflict and appearance of fairness, items A through J are, and item K will be motioned and voted on separately. So right now, I will read A through J. A, claims and check register. For approval, uh, sorry, for approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register. One, check numbers four zero zero seven two zero through four zero one zero four one. And electronic fund transfers V three six three six eight through V six four six three. And the grand total amount of three million, four hundred, ten thousand, eight hundred, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the amount of one million, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Three, regular payroll. Here we go. Sorry about that. So let's strike. The claim and check register that I just read. We have approval over the following checks and electronic funds are check numbers four to zero one, zero four two through four zero one two three seven. And electronic fund transfers V three six four six four through V three six five seven five. And the grand total amount of six million, three hundred, eighty-two thousand and seventeen dollars and eighteen cents. Two, regular payroll payouts for pay period ending November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred, thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Three, regular payroll for pay period ending December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the amount of one million, thirty thousand, six hundred, nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents. B, minutes of meeting, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. C, minutes of session, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. E, confirmation or confirmed reappointment of Eric Patterson to the planning commission. E, confirmed reappointment of Maggie Rich to the planning commission. F, Fifth Amendment to the agreement with Kitsap County for the incarceration of city prisoners. G, Public Works Agreement with A J Spray Foam Services, D V A Slack, Slab Jack to Geotechnical for the two thousand and twenty-two sidewalk trip hazard removal project. H, ordinance number five four six five amending ordinance number five four four two, establishing the city of Bremerton's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget as amended by ordinance number five four five zero. I, ordinance number five four six six adding section two point seven six point one seven oh to the Bremerton Municipal Code entitled Compost Procurement. Enjoy, ordinance number five four six seven amending chapter three point one two of the Bremerton Municipal Code entitled, or entitled one percent for arts fund.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on any, any one of these items on the consent agenda? Do you have anybody online? Seeing none, none, we will go to the council for a motion to approve. I move to approve the consent agenda has presented.
Second, and this would be for items A through J.
We have a motion and a second I call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Hoplin?
Yes.
Dunninge?
Yes. Can you hear me? Yes.
I can hear you.
You can hear me? Okay. The answer is yes. I'm glad. Thanks. That's a long word, hopefully.
I can hear you too.
Okay. It's a Chambers thing. Okay. Thanks a lot. Yes.
Yes.
Next would be item four J, or four K, acceptance of the lodging tax advisory committee's two thousand and twenty-three funding recommendations.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will go to the council for a motion.
I move acceptance of the lodging tax advisory committee's two thousand and twenty-three funding recommendations as specified under consent agenda.
We have a motion second. We will call for the question.
Member Fry?
Yes.
Hoplin?
Abstain.
Dunninge?
Yes.
Mopler?
Yes.
Younger? Chamberlain?
Yes.
Good now is also an extension. So we have five yeses and two abstentions.
Thank you. Up next is public recognition. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item that is not already listed on tonight's agenda. You may line up at the podium or participating by Zoom. Please raise your hand and we recognize. We only ask that you state your name for use in the record and lend me your comments for three minutes or less. A timer will be used so that everyone is treated equally. With that, I open public recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas. Excuse me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Darryl Riley. And I wanted to take this last city council session of the year to probably offer you a lens, a different view of a lens that you probably should take into consideration as it relates to the I situation and the racial equity advisory committee. So I've, I've been told often that my passion kind of, kind of supersedes my message a lot of times. But we wanna make sure that we don't, we don't let that happen this time. It's also ironic to be the only black person in this room talking about this issue. But for the record, I'm not upset or angry at anyone or dislike anyone, including the mayor. I actually think he a nice guy, you know, smart guy, you know, he's my neighbor. However, I, I do dislike him and I really take offense to the entire council and the mayor's lack of intentional, intentional, if you will, concern in leadership as it pertains to race and equity in Bremerton. Mr. Goodnow, I was your first choice after being the last person interviewed for the racial equity advisory committee. And what you said to me was, you said that I was a straight shooter who would bring credibility and a strong voice. You referred to me as no nonsense and committed. And I proved me you correct in your assessment by being consistent since August of two thousand and twenty. From the onset, I was adamant to you that this wasn't gonna work or wasn't gonna be substantive without the city in totality involved. I told you, I told Eagle, I told everybody who asked. You guys kind of didn't say anything for a while, but eventually, you know, everybody, you know, gave in to my delusions and said, well, the mayor doesn't want to be involved in that. To be honest with you, I didn't believe you. So I asked him. I asked him in front of my house. I said, Mr. Mayor, why don't you come to the mayor meeting and consider being involved in the racial equity advisory committee? Because the way the charter is written, you got the keys to the car. We can't drive the car unless you give us the keys. What he said to me was, well, Darryl, I used to be the council president. I'm pretty sure I could come up with some conventional language where the city could be involved with the racial advisory committee. That's what he said to me as he was stamping a stake for his, for his campaign in my front yard with Sonny in the car. So I was elated, you know, I thought I had accomplished something that you guys told me was, was out of the question, you know. You know, but then when he got to the meeting, he switched up and he started backing off. He wouldn't give a clear answer. There was a lot of imminence, horn and shit, excuse my language. And I didn't say anything at the time, but I found I was really pissed because he told me different. And he'll get his day to say that he told me different. Not that he lied, but I don't know what changed. We still continued on though. And we built the infrastructure, we did the outreach to the community, we compiled the data, and you participated in that. We had our forum, we had most of the black leaders talk about the things that they would like to see from the committee. The things that they would like to see from the city. We had people from all, every office in this building participate in that, as well as our race, some of their race. So I'm speaking from the place of a subject matter expert based upon what I've done in this community. Then you disappear. You disappear. And after you get me hyped up by encouraging me like you do, you disappear. I know you had new responsibilities as council president and all the influx, you know, I understand all that. But it seemed like all your interest with equity disappeared with you. You know, as it pertains to that, that group, you had an intricate relationship there, a lot of advice. You had a lot of substantive conversations and all of that went away. And now we're, we're on a committee that you're in charge of and we're not hearing from you. We haven't heard from you since, man. Not even a message of support. Nope. And what it reminded me of, and this ain't a shot at you, but what it reminded me of is the conversation you and I had before when you, when you was campaigning and the sign that said, I have white privilege. That's what came into my mind. So my question to you, is that what you gonna do with it? As, as the council chairman? Then I hear you're actually working with the mayor on the D E I thing. And I don't know how true that is. That's just through the grapevine. Nobody would give us any information. And I've been asking for at least eighteen months. I asked the mayor many times about his plans and he kept shunning me, he kept spinning. You know, I'm smart. Everybody might think I'm an ex-drug addict, ex-freak guy and all. You can think what you wanna think, but I'll probably make just as much as everybody in this room. So I'm cool with that, how you think of me. But I asked him about it. And then when I finally got a nerve to really ask him straight on, well, man, who did you ask about this? He kind of waved me off, you know, as if, you know, he didn't have to consult with the black community. That's how I took it. He may not have meant that, because I know I could have been doing it from a different space. So I wanna allow him that grace. But I was pissed with that, considering how much work I put in for him on his campaign. I consider him a friend. I thought we respected each other. I, I represented the city of Bremerton in the new space for all of y'all as it pertains to race and equity. You know what I'm saying? I felt like I was representing something for the city. And to get that response was really offensive to me, right? It's not that a D E I person is a bad thing. It's not. But without bipartisan, without anything from the bipartisan community in particular, you guys setting yourself up for failure. And I'm actually shocked that y'all don't find it highly offensive and morally wrong and out of place that the community's, can I finish?
Yeah, but I've given you six minutes.
Okay, well, that's what I wanna, is all I want.
I'm not cutting you off. I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up.
Here's all I want. We would like to figure out where this thing is going forward. This is the last meeting of the year. We spent, I spent thirty months, man. Six minutes ain't nothing. Coming to meetings every month. You know what I'm saying? All we wanna know is where it's going, because now you got money to pay the people for the stuff that I've been doing free. That's called slavery. That's where colonialism come in at. So that's what I want, to figure out how we gonna move forward and let the people who already set the groundwork and laid it for you to have a voice in it. I will be happy to get this chance after this, after this month. I've been trying to say this to y'all for thirty months. That's all I want. We wanna figure it out till leaving up, because I want all of y'all to figure out what equity looks like for me and for people, black people in this community. We already told you. We told y'all. We gave you the data and you disregarded. And that ain't fair. That ain't right. It's not a public service. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And any changes, any stuff for the race equity, the advisory committee or any, is all will be public and will be discussed probably starting in January. So basically where we're at is we're trying to get it right. And I think as Mr. Riley said, we didn't, we didn't get it, we didn't get the structure of it right. We're looking to fix that. So anyways, anybody else for public? All right, council member else in the room, who, who go to Stephen Young?
Thank you. I was delighted to hear the announcement that was made at the December seventh meeting regarding multi-careers plans to bring neighborhood and a neighborhood E R to Bremerton. As you all know, our community is in dire need when it comes to multiple types of healthcare services, starting with the complete lack of emergency care anywhere in Bremerton. This didn't happen overnight, and it's the result of the efforts of a number of people, ranging from members of the community to the council and to the mayor. I want to thank everyone at tonight's meeting who supported this effort in some way. I hope this is just the beginning. Given our current population and growth projections, there's ample need to increase access to affordable, comprehensive, and equitable healthcare throughout the county. Enough to support St. Michael Medical Center along with additional healthcare providers outside the Virginia Mason Franciscan Health System. Choice in healthcare options is good for the entire county. Thank you for taking a step toward achieving that goal for the residents of Bremerton.
Thank you. Next, Marwan.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I have three things for you. The first one is my agency contracts with the county to get the unhoused into the severe weather shelter. And the street on Rydell Road in Elmira by Kitsap Mental Health is pretty bad. And so we are asked to take folks to St. Michael's late in the evening, oftentimes. And so we wanted to bring that to your attention there. The other thing is, is that a lot of work has been done to advocate for restrooms down on M L King for the unhoused. And I'm hearing some things that this has kind of stalled out, so the money is there, but people don't know where the bathroom's gonna go, if the bathroom's gonna go, you know, there's conversations about trying porta-potties in the past. I will inform you that the county has four porta-potties and they were deployed successfully at Veterans Park. There was an issue out there, but that was not from the unhoused as it was from someone else. At Salvation Army, they have to make everyone leave out, at least for a few hours, to do their changeover or clean up or do whatever is necessary. That's even in these sub-freezing temperatures. The least that these folks should have is restrooms to use. This must remain a priority as you have earmarked the money toward it. The last thing that I wanna talk about is react. And I, I will echo what Darryl Riley just said. But one thing I really would like to do is bring attention to the fact that, you know, that I attend every city council meeting. And typically, I am the only African American that is in the space, either online or physically in the space. Your constituents aren't here. And I think that speaks to the fact that they don't have any confidence in city council or the mayor in regards to actually working on the issues that are important to them. Now, K P H D through Jessica Guidry and Lacretia Robinson over at K R L are doing some wonderful things with D E and I. And I would ask that city council and the mayor, now that this position has been funded, to reach out to your fellow organizations there in the city and really take a look at what they're doing and implement the things that are doing well and seek their counsel in that. I hope in two thousand and twenty-three, you will redouble your efforts to the black community and rebuild the trust and the faith that you have built up thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Jane Ribbels.
Hello, council, mayor. It's got nothing to do with anything that's been talked about before, but on your snow and ice response, it doesn't do neighborhood streets any good to come with a plow after it's turned icy. And I'm wondering if there's any way we can just start salting residential streets because nobody's been able to leave my neighborhood for, since Sunday afternoon, pretty much. I know we don't have a lot of staff, but just running through once with a sand or residential streets make a huge difference. Nobody can leave their homes. So, thanks.
Next, Mary Lou Long.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lou Long. Merry Christmas to all of you who are attending this meeting. Happy Hanukkah to all of my Jewish friends and neighbors. And I don't know how many people celebrate other different religious groups, but happy holidays to all of your beliefs. I'm here again to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that didn't take very long. And I know your meetings aren't very long these days. Been watching them. And there's not one meeting that you couldn't have introduced somebody that would like to say the pledge of allegiance at your meetings that belongs in the city government or is a person of interest that would like to do that from one of the scouting communities in our community. I know in one meeting you did have the Boy Scouts present the flag. And then the very next meeting, you kind of hid the flag in the corner of the room and didn't bring it out and didn't. And then the very next meeting, you kind of hid the flag in the corner of the room and didn't bring it out and didn't say anything. I'm very, very, um, hopeful that our country will be recognized as a nation of rules and laws and fairness for everyone. And that we have a constitution that everyone should learn in school, inside and outside. And I, I just think that there's not enough attention to understanding what our nation stands for. So I'd just like to say, um, I hope you educate yourselves, uh, public. I hope the public educates themselves because it's extremely important to have an educated society in order to run a country like ours, which is a republic. Um, good evening and have a very merry Christmas.
Thank you. I think you'd be surprised how much we all agree with what you said. Um, and, uh, we'll move on to, uh, Gwana Matso.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to echo Darrell Riley and Marwan Cameron's thoughts on racial equity, uh, the racial equity advisory committee. Um, I wanted to say that I was not contacted by either the, like, the chair or the vice chair of the racial equity advisory committee, of which I was a member, um, to discuss the sunsetting of several of our terms at any point. I learned that through my fellow community members, which I am sorry to say has been typical of this group, that the city council has, uh, particularly in the last year, not provided the support, um, and the, the necessary tools that we need to be successful as a group. Um, and I've, I've been continually, but particularly disheartened, incredibly disheartened by the lack of communication and collaboration, which has been slapdash at best. And, um, I would say dismissive and obfuscating at best. Um, and I think that, like Mr. Cameron said, the lack of confidence that the BIPOC community in Bremerton has from the city council is, at this point, kind of well-founded. And I'm very disappointed and I, um, encourage the city council to do better in, in the future. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And again, that is our role to, uh, re-craft this and absolutely to do better. Thank you, everyone. Uh, is there anyone else for public recognition? Seeing none, I now close public recognition and move on to public hearings.
Public hearing item number six A. Final public hearing on property use agreement with active construction Inc. for Pine Road Stormwater Basin Improvement Project. Please enter tonight is Parks and Recreation Director Jeff Alavado.
Good evening, council. Um, before you tonight is the final of two public hearings on a use agreement. Uh, App Gates Construction Incorporated is the contractor that's currently working on the Pine, uh, Pine Road Stormwater Basin project with Public Works. Uh, the contractor proposed to use a portion of Stephenson Canyon as a place to put a job trailer in temporary storage. Uh, the, the Parks Department worked with the contractor and coordinated removal of a lot of, uh, debris at that site in payment for use of that. First slide please. So Stephenson Canyon, a- as you are aware, is, uh, on the east side of Bremerton, just, uh, west of Born Avenue. See by the star here, that's like. So the area that we're proposing use, uh, was an old cul-de-sac. This is an old housing area. And it consists of an old foundation area, um, and the area in red is the one we're speaking of. Next is a couple of pictures of the existing conditions. Obviously, there's no snow on this, so this was taken a little bit earlier. But, um, we have large piles of vegetation debris, uh, areas of concrete and rock, and some old wood and wooden debris. And the contractor will remove all that, dispose of it properly, um, and that's in exchange for use of the property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment and action will be taken by council members. Public hearing is open to any member of the public who wish to comment on this item. Let's go online, uh, and, uh, Jane Ribbelsky.
Yes, hello. Um, it certainly looks like that area needs to be cleaned up, but is there a count of how many, um, trucks and trailers and how much debris, um, they anticipate storing there? If they're going by, um, you know, you just showed the end of the cul-de-sac. But are they going by, um, existing residences that may be disturbed by multiple trucks or and noise? It's a question.
Uh, thank you. So, um, we don't have an exact number of how many trucks will go in. We do know that they're placing a small job shack and they'll would be putting some materials as a staging area. Uh, we've defined the area that they can use and expect them to stay within that area. So there is a limit of how many things they can bring in. Uh, there is an access point through a, a city road. Um, we don't anticipate tremendous amount of movement in and out. I think most of it is going to be prior to getting to work, uh, getting in in the morning, getting their stuff out of there, and then shutting down at a decent time prior to, uh, evening time. That's the best we know. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public recognition? I now close public recognition and move on, uh, to, sorry, let's keep them lying. Uh, seeing none, I close the public hearing. And we'll go to the council for a motion. Uh, council vice president Chamberlain.
Thank you. Moved to approve the property's agreement with active construction need for use of a portion of Stephenson Canyon and authorize the mayor to finalize an dispute agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. We are open for discussion. I'll fight.
Thank you. And, um, uh, thank you, Director Alavado. Okay, uh, so I'm embarrassed to say that I've gotten lost in Stephenson Canyon before. And come out at that trailhead, I know exactly what you're talking about. Like, it's the tiniest, like, you know, I did, I got lost. But there's eight trailheads, right? Eight or nine?
Several. Uh, that one's not technically a trailhead. It's a road end. Uh, you can use it as a trailhead, but it's not posted as one, so.
Okay, will it be?
Yeah.
I don't know. I made it out to there somehow and when I, I came up. Um, and so will it, will it be a trailhead? I can't.
Uh, we don't have plans to make it a trailhead. Um, there's no parking there for vehicles to park. Uh, you can walk in there from the sidewalk. I'm sure that's how you access it. Uh, but the main trail entrance is up by our greenhouses on the upper level. Uh, and there are parking spaces there for boats. But there are many, as you mentioned. There's one off of the, the off-ramp off of the main highway before you go across the bridge. There's one on McKenzie Court. There's one down on the other side by Lyons Park coming up the hill. A lot of access. It's a big area. And Stephenson Canyon is a pretty large area.
I came out from Stephenson Canyon. So somebody has made it their own trailhead. And so also I was wondering if it was gonna be, and I know it's right next to the city nursery there, and I was looking at the aerial view of it. Um, are, is there any plan to connect that space from the greenhouse to the new cleaned up area?
Actually, there's quite a bit of difference in grade there. So if you, if you're up in the upper level where the greenhouses are and the main trailhead is, it drops down twenty feet, maybe more. I'm not exactly sure. There is a trail, um, that you can go on the, on the, essentially, it's the, the south side of the parking area that takes you down into the main trail system and gets you that lower area, but it's not a, not directly connected there. If that helps at all.
Okay, so the actual trailhead that I probably meant to come out of is right by the greenhouse, right? Um, and so who owns that property as a city property or?
It's city property, Parks, Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Um, and so that was a very valid question what, um, then from Ribbelsky asked, which was, um, have, you know, it's Lewis, right? Tiny street. I mean, it's just a little like, uh, it's, it's kind of a cul-de-sac almost in and of itself, just the way that it, the, the road shakes around. Have you done any outreach to that community to find out?
We have not. We've been in the process of getting this approved and we will definitely do that. And just to speak to that, the contractor's already working in the neighborhood. And they would have to follow all the current restrictions on construction, noise, all of those things that they're currently under their existing contract. This is just another option for them to do, uh, storage and lay down, uh, and actually benefit us by getting the area cleaned up.
It's gonna be, yeah, um, that'd be good. There, there is a lot of debris there. So there hasn't been outreach to the neighborhood yet. You said the contractor's already working. I know they're working over at, um, and I'm, I'll keep it, I'll just keep it. I'm almost done. Um, uh, I know that there's work over kind of right near me, over off of, um, a- at the Stephenson Canyon. Is there also, there's also work happening in this space close to the greenhouse? I, I wasn't aware of that.
It's a little, um, I would say it's, it's northwest of the greenhouse. That's where the, the, it, it's, uh, essentially a catch basin at the end of the stream. They're doing work there. Uh, and they have had access from that area into that. Uh, they're not doing any other work that we're aware of in the main section, just, just down by that, um, I'm sorry, I don't have a good term for the term.
Oh, it's the same, it's the, the same contractors are the ones that are working on the Sheridan Road project? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, the Pine Road Basin drainage, yes.
Okay. Um, all right, I think I, I just would, uh, I mean, there, yeah, we have the, I like your assurance that there's not gonna be a lot of in and out once the job shack is up and it'll be shutting down at decent hours. I guess, um, because that road's so small, I, I mean, I guess I would hope that there would be a little bit of communication with the neighbors. There's not a lot of neighbors. I know there's like, there's a couple of older neighbors there that maybe they don't, I mean, I walked that neighborhood, you know, for a time. And they might not appreciate the noise and be curious what's going on. That's all. Thank you.
We'd be happy to coordinate with Public Works and help make sure that they know about this.
Not that many houses on Lewis. I bet y'all could do it in one day, just quick. Thank you so much. I appreciate your information.
All right, we'll go to, uh, council member Mochler next.
Thanks, Council President Goodna. Um, good evening, Director Alavado. I have, um, a few questions. So as you've mentioned already, this will be a typical staging area. It'll be used early in the morning for pickups and, um, in the afternoon, as time allows, um, for drop-off. It'll be five days a week, more or less. Uh, do you have an idea of the estimated duration?
It would be the duration of the contract for the project and my guess is end of March.
And, okay, so beginning?
The project is underway currently. They're currently using the, the old Bremerton Nazarene property as a lay-down yard and working in the street right away currently. Uh, this has been kind of in the works for some time and, uh, because of the requirement to go through the park protection, we had to take it to Parks and Rec Commission and then ultimately public, you know, public hearing for commission or, excuse me, council approval. So they've actually asked for this quite some time ago and we're just working it through the process. So it's been a while. They have been working on the project. Uh, engineering tells me that it probably will end in some kind of mark.
The wheels of government do grind slowly. Um, thank you for that explanation. Um, I was wondering, uh, since this is really a built plateau directly above a very sharp declivity, Stephenson Canyon, um, what measures, um, have, are being taken, will be taken to protect that canyon from sediment? Uh, like a silt fence with straw bales, anything like that?
I'm gonna ask that Pons bring up the, the, uh, presentation real quick. Um, the area that they're gonna be in is actually the lowest area. Um, so the, the plateau. Um, so if you look at the, the two long greenhouses that are on the, basically on the right hand of your screen, that's where our greenhouse area is. And then where you see, yeah, that's the greenhouse area. And then there's a pretty steep slope that goes, um, south. I guess it's, oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's westerly towards the proposed area. Uh, that lower area is, is where the, the staging area will be. So that's the lowest part of that section of the park, if that helps explain.
Okay, I was misled. Um, I, I looked this up on the soils map and it was, um, glacial outwash, which seems like a steep slope. Um, but the third of your three photographs of the site, I believe, um, over in the, in the back, uh, right-hand side, it looked as though it was going down. Okay, so thank you for so very courteously correcting my, my mistake. Um, what materi- I'm just gonna move on to a couple more questions. Um, what materials will be stored on site?
I, I don't have the answer to that. It's within their contract of whatever materials they need. Um, my guess would be piping and, and maybe some materials that they need to fill in the ditches of what our, our understanding is.
Do you have solvents or adhesives or anything like that?
Again, the contract really specifies what they can safely store and handle and it was the same contract.
Thank you. Um, and what is the monitoring plan for this?
I'm sorry?
What is the monitoring plan for, you know, overseeing the A C I's use of the site?
Uh, the monitoring would be the same monitoring and oversight that the engineering uses for the entire project.
Okay. Um, last question, but one, Director Alavado. Um, is, uh, A C I posting a bond to cover any o- omissions or remediation?
Uh, as part of the contract, there's a, um, possibly we can help us with this, but we looked at the use agreement and then there is parts of the contract that will cover that and hoping that's the end.
Okay, thank you. And, um, so I don't remember there having been a job trailer in your previous presentation, but that makes perfect sense. Will there be porta sands, uh, one or two porta sands in association with that job trail?
I apologize, but again, the, the actual project contract has most of that requirement in it. So the classifications and, uh, and the specials that are part of the overall project, uh, require that as regular. And I mean, they'll have to secure their, their own property. All of those things are in place. So we're not asking for a new contract. It's an existing Public Works contract. This is just an additional area for them to stage up, uh, and will benefit from their using that area because they'll clean it up for us.
Okay, um.
The original agenda bill did, um, state, um, contractor has proposed use of the area of Stephenson Canyon to place a job trailer and temporary storage of associated project materials and equipment.
Okay, um. Okay, um. Then thank you very much. Um, I'm sorry that we haven't had an opportunity to look at that contract, but uh, this all sounds good and congratulations on getting all of that debris moved out of there. And at some future point, when it's not the holiday week, I'd love to learn what Parks' plans are for that site. Because it looks like a pretty little place. Thank you.
We'd be happy to bring our, our plan to you and have you help us with that. Very, very good idea.
Thank you, Director Alavado.
You're welcome.
I, I just wanted to get some clarity. So you said the, the Nazarene church has been letting you use, I mean, is it that equipment that we're moving to that space?
I apologize. I don't have details of what equipment the contractor's trying to move to that area. Uh, what I can tell you is that they've requested use of the Stephenson Canyon area that we identified in this. And, and in return for that use, we're gonna get the area cleared up. I, I'm happy to find out more information about that and, and get that to you and the public. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
No worries. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so I just wanna maybe summarize a little, like, on this, but basically the bigger contract really covers the treatment of all these materials, uh, their behavior, their liabilities and all that kind of stuff. And this is just because we're using park property. If it was a Public Works property, they could have just used it.
Yeah, would have been pre- rent, you know, would have been rented.
Again, the big contract, because it's in the city property, covers all these sort of, uh, concerns.
Okay. I'm looking at our attorney here. I'm hoping that. Okay, I'm looking at our attorney here. I'm hoping that's correct.
Yeah, the larger contract has liability issues and their requirements for the, for the larger project unit, so.
Well, thank you. Uh, seeing no further discussion, I call for the question.
Councilmember Coughlin?
Yes.
Denny Hee?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yes.
Younger? Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
This concludes public hearings, um, and there are no general business items tonight. Um, the next item on the agenda would be council report.
Okay, next we will have a brief council report since this is the last council meeting of the month, end of the year. Uh, we will start with District Seven, Councilmember Eric Younger.
Well, thank you. Whether this is on or if I even need it. Hear me alright? So first of all, I'd like to thank all the members of the public on the Zoom meeting and for, just by the particular come up ability and express it, you know. It is greatly appreciated. Looking at the audience, I see two, two members of the public, I believe. And, uh, I wish there were more. So even if it may be perceived as negative comments, I welcome all the participation we can get in this government, the better. On a, another note, you know, I said, just said happy holidays to Mr. Olivato. I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And, uh, whatever other religion you may have or non-religious celebration you have this holidays, I wish you festive times and wish everyone a very happy New Year. On the weather front, I can't wait for this cold weather to end. I moved to Western Washington from Minnesota to avoid snow. Every year I get to experience snow, it seems, at, for a week or two. Okay, I guess. Looking at my weather app, the weather forecast for next week is lows in the forties, highs in the with rain. I'll take that. Do that.
Thank you. Next, District Six Councilmember Anna Mochler.
Thanks, Council President. Before I start, can I just check my volume because I can barely hear you guys? Am I too loud?
We can hear you.
But I'm asking, am I being too loud?
No.
Okay. Let us go then. Um, happy end of the year. Sworn in February twenty second, two, twenty-two, twenty-two. Yay. Moving on, please. Next slide. Um, this is the District Six portion of the garden tour. This is Autumn and her urban farm. Next slide, please. This is Erin and her mom and their urban farm. Next slide, please. And this is Rachel, Lauren and Jack, um, in their urban farm. Um, these were just all mutual aid communities. The, all of these people participate in the Buy Nothing Group, um, in the Callow Seed Library and are really involved in just giving away seeds and doing seed exchanges and exchanging information and advice. It's a really good mutual aid community. I'm really proud of, of this in the district. Next slide, please. And all of Bremerton. This is Santa at High Lowes. Next slide. And this is Pirate Santa at High Lowes. Next slide, please. This was Krampus. I just love this shot. Uh, as soon as I started photographing Krampus, this whole scene opened up. It was a wonderful event and I was really happy about it. Next slide, please. More Krampus. This is Krampus at Sparks Commons. Next slide. And this is the District Six Town Hall on the second Monday of this month. Um, where Chris Smith and Hillary Hamilton, whom you can hardly see, came and talked to people about the Bremerton One app. Um, it was a, a wonderful presentation. They had even brought, um, photographs of specific things that they had come out to look at in District Six. Really thoughtful, really well done. And just the next slide is just, since Hillary was cut off in the first photo, here she is. Next slide, please. And I'm done, um, with all those photographs. This is my dog, clearly broken. Um, I just really am hoping that in the coming year, that I think this council has done really well and I hope we can do even better at extending aid and responding to our communities. And that we can find more ways to address concerns that don't fit easily into a committee like affordable housing, transparent and responsive communication, restoring and preserving our urban forest and other systems. And we could be even more used to our city by listening to and addressing their concerns. Because the more people affect our government, the more faith they'll have in it. Public participation leads to good stewardship because when people are invested in the city, that responds to them as transparently and quickly as possible. I really love the way this council has a big heart for Bremerton. And really good heads on our shoulders, too. It's been a privilege to have worked with you in twenty twenty-two and I look forward to twenty twenty-three. Happy Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy all of the days getting longer celebrations. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, District Four, Councilmember Quinn Denny Hee.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and thank you, Councilmember Mochler, for especially the dog pic. I think I'm gonna do a New Year's resolution to include more pictures in my council report, so. It's just, uh, it's a, it's a nice thing to see. Um, first of all, I apologize for not being in the chambers today. Um, after three years of a pandemic, my husband and I returned from New York with, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, and so, you know, if you've been serving on council with me since July of twenty twenty-one, uh, you know, I've been messaging to, to stay very safe. Um, I think, I think we got a little too comfortable, so please, again, start wearing your masks. Definitely get your bivalent booster. Um, it's, it's been a rough one. I, I still have, uh, not recovered my, my sense of smell or taste yet and I thought that that kind of went out with the first variants, but it did not. Um, so anyway, uh, thank you for allowing me to, to show here. Thank you for the, the technology that allows it. Um, I, I, I also wanna say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Winter Solstice, which is tonight. Um, and if you're an atheist like me, as a former Roman Catholic that just really loves the, the culture of Christmas, Merry Christmas to you as well in, in that belief system. Um, I, I did wanna really thank the, the members of the public and the, uh, members of the React uh, committee for, for showing up today and, and speaking their truths. Um, that is, uh, greatly appreciated and I, I hope it continues into next year and, and we get more voices, uh, as Councilmember Younger stated, the more participation we have in government, the better. Um, but I did write down a few thoughts, um, just because there was some communication lags and, and I wanna be clear, uh, about things about React. So, um, as communicated to the committee at our final meeting of the year, I plan to present the draft ordinance to fellow council members um, for consideration that would codify Bremerton React into the municipal code. Uh, this will most likely take place at our January twenty-eighth retreat. This ordinance has been analyzed, critiqued and worked off by the two thousand twenty-two Race Equity Committee over the course of about eight to ten months since we, the committee, first were informed by the legal department about the need to codify the group to align with the requirements of the city charter. The citizens on the committee express a desire for input into the executive branch powers, um, such as hiring decisions, creating job descriptions and creating goals of executive branch employees. Uh, this input requires the executive's involvement in the committee, um, as council cannot usurp executive powers. I'm looking forward to collaborating with the executive branch, full council and of course the community on the best structure for ensuring race equity in local Bremerton government. One city council can consider the recommendation of the two thousand twenty-two React. Thanks so much, everyone, and enjoy your time off.
Uh, thank you. Next is, uh, District Three, Councilmember Jeff Coughlin.
Thank you, Council President. And as my slides come up, I'm gonna echo my fellow council members and just say we, we really do appreciate that public input. We need to, we need to hear it, good or bad, and I know sometimes it's difficult for a formal meeting to have a good conversation, but I think everybody here is willing to have a coffee and sit down with folks. And, uh, on React specifically, I wanna, um, actually commend Councilmember Denny Hee and Councilmember Chamberlain and Councilmember, uh, Anna Mochler for serving on that this year. It's, uh, I know it's been a difficult subject and it hasn't been easy, but I know all three of them have worked really, really hard on it. And I think, uh, um, we're all gonna keep working hard next year and, uh, as Council President said, we'll, we'll keep working to get it right. So thank you all so much for, for tackling that. Uh, just wanted to recap District Three. Um, it's two main categories, businesses and Public Works. Um, a couple of times throughout the year, I've just kinda highlighted and welcomed new businesses to Bremerton. Um, as I, as I've seen them walk in the street or on social media, I'm sure I, I've missed a few. Um, but here's just, uh, sixteen I had logos for. I think there were a couple, a couple more as well, so. Gosh, about twenty new businesses just in District Three alone this year. It's great to see that, um, that growth and vitality, um, and all these small local businesses we have, we have coming to the city. The one I had not highlighted up throughout the year is Grumble and Wine. It's just opened up, opened up the other day, um, right up Pacific Year. So I'm looking forward to more businesses coming in in twenty twenty-three and grateful to be in a city that just has so many, uh, local people investing in the community. And next slide. I just wanted to highlight and recap what a great year it was, uh, for construction in the city as well. Loading in a second. Not taking a picture. Well, uh, just a bunch of the projects, especially District Three, um, should be, uh, gosh, we had Quincy Square has been progressing so nicely, all the downtown improvements and pedestrian safety and the bike lanes throughout the city. Um, going in Sixth Street, uh, repaved, um, sewer we, sorry, sewer work on the net. East Lebanon Perry, massive project that's under construction, Washington eleven, um, so many great discussions between the residents there and Public Works, um, and all that trapping up planning, all the improvements along Warren and other things throughout the city. So it's been a, been a busy year and tomorrow's, uh, sorry, tomorrow, next year is gonna be even busier as a lot of these continued new projects start. So just thanks to, uh, all the city staff who are working so hard to continually improve, um, District Three and the rest of the city. And finally, I just tried to find a couple of pictures throughout the year on this final slide. Um, just wanna echo what a wonderful first year it's, it's been on council. I know it's been a year of, uh, of a lot of change and a lot of challenges, but, um, Council President, I wanna thank you for, for your leadership. Um, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I had a great picture of the two of us that wanted the green drink and I could not for the life of me find it in time to put it here. So sorry, but I wanna say a pleasure to work with you as well. Um, and just a giant thanks to all the, all the city staff who, who make running the city possible and a great place to, to live and work. And so I'm excited for, for next year and all the good things we have ahead. That's it for my report.
Thank you. Uh, next is District Two, Councilmember Denise Frye.
That was such a fun report. Wow. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Coughlin's support of small businesses. And, uh, he's very fortunate with the downtown and the net district. It, it seems to draw the coolest businesses. So thank you for that. Uh, happy holidays, everybody. Uh, the little girl in me, I may be sixty-seven, but this time of year, I'm like an eight-year-old. And, uh, I just want to wish everybody comfort and joy. Those two things are the most important things to me, uh, as I walk through life during the holiday season. A lot of people out there need comfort, uh, and I do what I can. I, I know that we all do what we can. Um, and there is joy out there for everyone, especially this holiday season. Happy winter solstice. Uh, I grew up with an uncle that had a dairy farm and so the winter solstice was, yeah, it was a big deal, but only because it was in the farmer's almanac. Uh, I, I, I grew up that way. Uh, so no matter what you celebrate this season, uh, please, uh, find the joy, uh, in those celebrations and hold on to it. It, it really is a magical time of year. And then I gotta give a shout out to Public Works, uh, Director Nocky, your staff, you know, those trucks out there. Uh, and, and Mayor, thanks for pointing out you're covering the hills, man, because I wouldn't have been able to make it down here uh, if those streets weren't clear. It really makes me proud this time of year, uh, to be in a city, uh, which set, has such wonderful services for people. Uh, so thank you, uh, to all the staff, especially those who adhere to the night. Uh, happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Next, uh, Council Vice President Jennifer Chamberlain.
Wow, look at that picture. Wait a minute. That was, what was? Oh, we got, that was sleeper alert on that picture. We've, we've been waiting for our official council picture for the year, which was a lo- took a long time to get, but we made it happen. Um, so we've had a pretty successful year. Um, you know, there's, um, we've expanded behavioral health navigator program. We, uh, helped put an ordinance in place that, um, protects, um, you know, gender-affirming care and abortion care and things like that. Um, we've done a lot of work. Um, you know, we have a budget, but we did the budget process, um, and there's allocations in there, not only for, uh, you know, uh, for the React committee, but also for bathrooms in our city. Uh, we have a lot of things that, that, um, that we should be proud of. And, and, um, it's, it's, I really thought that this is gonna be, um, a little bit more difficult and I'm hoping in the coming year, y'all are gonna make it a little more difficult for me because it's in those discussions where we disagree and where we get all the different sides that we can come up with a better, uh, more robust solution. Um, I think, uh, you know, the lens that I view life through having, uh, been someone who, um, comes from, uh, I mean, uh, you know, I used to be on state assistance. I used to have food stamps. You know, I used to, uh, I've been evicted in a lot of places. Well, not evicted necessarily, but slept on a lot of couches in a lot of places in this town. And, um, so the lens that I, uh, view, uh, the world through, um, is different than, than, than some of y'all here. And so, um, you know, I wanna hear, uh, I wanna hear other people's stories too. But the reason that I, you know, one of the reasons I decided to run is because I felt like the lens that, that I view the world through was lacking. Um, you know, it's been, um, said that, um, that maybe I don't see the perspective of, of uh, people who are homeowners and pay taxes and, uh, that I'm only viewing through the lens of, uh, like our helpless community, most vulnerable. I'm okay with that, um, because their voice is not heard, you know? So we really need to find a solution, um, to get some dignity to our folks in the downtown Bremerton. We need a bathroom and I'm really kind of frustrated by the bureaucracy of it and by, um, the lag of time and there's no plan. And, um, I'd like to see something happen. We allocated funding for it, so we need to see it through. Uh, and waiting until February, when we meet the public safety again, is a little bit too long. Um, because folks are facing, you know, freezing temperatures. I don't even know, but sometimes, uh, not everybody can get into that shelter either. One shelter that we have in our downtown core. Um, I talked to a lady today who, um, she was a walker. Um, and, uh, she was banned from Salvation Army. Luckily, they let her in, um, for the, for the emergency shelter. Um, but she, uh, you know, she just, she doesn't even have the resources to, to use email. She doesn't know how to do email. And she's out there and she's getting banned from these shelters. And, uh, and her tent was in shambles after the snow. Uh, so, um, I just, you know, would love for more of you, uh, to come down and, and, and view the world through the eyes of the people that are not, um, you know, just squatting down in our downtown core, using our public resources, but they have legitimate issues. Mental wellness, physical, um, disabilities, um, legitimate issues that prevent them from being able to access affordable housing, uh, resources. So thank you. Uh, happy winter solstice. I wish that I could have my traditional backyard fire, but I'm afraid my fire pit is, I wonder, smells. Um, thank you. Uh, Happy New Year and we do appreciate you all.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, um, yeah, it is the solstice. I think I saw somewhere that there's only eight, twenty-five hours of sunlight today. That's kind of interesting. Um, I wanna wash, wish all the residents here in the city, uh, happy holidays and, you know, thank the city staff and my fellow council members, just, but I- and, you know, thank the city staff and my fellow councilmembers, just what I think was a very, uh, successful year. Um, it's really an honor to serve. Um, but I just want to also say that I don't think any of us take this because we think it's gonna be easy. You know, in conversations around race equity have been, you know, really, really challenging. And I, uh, believe in, uh, Mr. Riley no less, uh, than, um, than when I, when we started into this. And, uh, you know, I feel a little disappointed that maybe I let him down. Uh, but I think there's, there's, there's rules on how many of us can get involved, so I feel that React, to React until it comes to in front of all of us and things like that. But everyone's committed, uh, to making this another thing, right? Getting restrooms and houses as fast as we can and things like that. So, um, yeah, anyways, um, we're not, we're not perfect. We're not in a perfect spot, but we're moving in the right direction. And I'm confident in the folks that I'm, uh, serving with, so. Um, and I'm glad that everyone was able to join us tonight, so. Um, if I can get my first slide up. So, um, this is really, really interesting, actually, that this is the last meeting of the year, and, uh, we just, I mean, we had to get a time that we were all together. We had to get a photographer. Um, so this is, uh, one of our council photos. Um, I like this one. This is maybe my second favorite. Can we go to the next one? Not much of a change, but I think this will be the official council portrait. But my favorite picture is probably the next one. Um, and, uh, so I'm gonna have you, uh, actually, I'm gonna have you switch to the next slide. And I'm gonna have you leave that up for the rest of the meeting until we adjourn. Um, so we do, uh, so Happy Holidays again from all of us. Uh, the, uh, council members will now, uh, be in executive session for ten minutes to discuss pending litigation as allowed under RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one high, and action is anticipated. Uh, council, basically, as soon as we hit turn, that clock starts, so if we can reassemble back there, uh, that would be awesome. Um, so, okay, so we are adjourned. Back in ten minutes.
All right. So typically, we would end, but
Recording stopped.
Uh, when they come back, we want to capture that. So we will hang out, uh, while they go into their executive session for ten minutes. Uh, for those of you that might be your first time, you're gonna go back and, uh, discuss whatever that item is. And sometimes they'll say, hey, there's not gonna be any, uh, you know, coming back after that, and we in the meeting, and that's it. Or I should say, they in the meeting. I just killed the show. But, excuse me. But since they will be back in ten minutes, we will go ahead and, uh, wait for them to come back and see what it is that they decide. Now, normally, they put up a timer, uh, so we know when they're coming back. But about ten minutes, they should return. Also, FYI, public comment is typically in the beginning. Uh, usually what they do is, uh, they do their opening, uh, to the meeting. Uh, the mayor does report, and then they open it up for anything. You can, you know, say, hey, this person's doing a great job of the community. Pretty much whatever you want to say for your public comment there for three minutes. And then for each item they discuss, they typically will open it up for public comment. Uh, so you want to make sure that you're here in the very beginning. Uh, and you also want to make sure that you look at the agenda if you can, uh, because if it's not in the agenda, then you may not, may have missed your opportunity to provide public comment. So in two thousand and twenty-three, um, my challenge to you is to, now, they meet every other, every other Wednesday. And if there's a fifth Wednesday, there's no meeting. So you figure, hmm, twenty-six, they probably meet maybe twenty-two times a year. Uh, if you can try to make it to twenty-five percent of those and make public comment on something that is important to you, think of how phenomenal that would be. Granted, it is icy and snowy right now, uh, so it is, uh, there's not a lot of people physically there, but they have decided to continue this in a hybrid format. So this is really easy to log into a Zoom. And for, uh, many folks that are, have many experiences in Zoom meetings, you know the format, this old hat, it's super simple to do. You don't have to stay for the whole thing. You stay for your part. You say what, what's on your mind, um, and then you kind of go from there. So, super critical, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and it's something that you have to keep, uh, at the ready. And if you notice, uh, President Goodnow and Councilwoman, uh, Chamberlain both spoke to two of the issues that I brought up, right? The bathrooms for the unhoused and also React. And so that happens because of the constant push, the constant presence, and the constant conversation. It doesn't happen if you don't say anything, because there's so many other fish to fry. I think this is a two-hundred-million-dollar budget for this city. And so it's very quick to get lost in the other things, water, repairs, whatever. Fun stuff, whatever, uh, Crumpets Christmases. It, it, it's really easy for them to get caught up into other issues, right? Because they're managing the entire city. Uh, and so there are a lot of issues. And so you have to keep it present on their mind. And with them only meeting every other week, uh, and you having only that opportunity, uh, again, write letters, write emails. You know, that is all in the public, right? Freedom of Information Act, i- it's all there. Uh, I like a letter better or doing a public comment, because those things are on the record versus a phone call. Because then that kind of is more of a hearsay type thing. The emails are great because it gives you a journal documenting the dates and the times that you have, uh, reached out to city council and had these conversations, right? And you could print those out or put them all in a folder and have a binder of, hey, look, you know, from the beginning of the year, I was advocating and talking about this issue. You said you were gonna do this on this date, that you were looking into it. Four months passed, we still had no mu, movement. This needs to be a priority, right? And one of the things that, uh, Councilwoman Mockler was saying was the, the wheels of government move slow. And while that may be true, one of the reasons why people run for office is because they want to change things. They want to do things more efficiently. They want to do things faster. And so while many of them are new, and you do have to give them time, you know, I, I will admit, being a trustee for the Kitsap Regional Library, learning everything that they have going on and how the process works and doing all the motion things, you know, there's a learning curve there, right? There's a lot of information to consume. And so that's, um, is quite the undertaking. So, got to stay present, have to stay involved, but folks want to make change. That's why they run. But we need them to make the change faster. So this is disappointing. When we met, uh, for the pancake breakfast to talk about resolving some of the issues downtown, uh, we wanted the bathrooms and to have a pilot program that would go for the duration of the severe weather shelter. Well, they're not even gonna talk about it until February. By the time they actually take action on it, the severe weather shelter will probably be closing. And while getting bathrooms down there is just the point, period. Really difficult to have to, uh, struggle in that way or try to hold it for three hours or try to figure out where you possibly can go and use the restroom, if you don't soil yourself, unfortunately. And I was thinking about that the other day myself. I, um, you know, sometimes you need to use the restroom. You're busy doing something. It's like, oh, I'll, I'll hold it. I don't have to go so bad right now. And then there's other times, or after you've done that, the next time it hits, it's like, man, if I don't go right now, I'm not gonna make it. And you barely make it, and you just feel like, I, I was gonna lose it. So, I mean, think about what that feels like. Coupled with being unhoused, not having access to a shower on a regular basis, not having access to clean clothes, being subjected to the weather, the wind, the rain, the heat, now the snow, the ice. It's twenty-one. It's eleven degrees below freezing, and this isn't even factoring in the wind chill, and it's not even seven P M. We have to find a way to get find more humanity. Whether you believe these folks have brought it on themselves and made bad decisions and, uh, whatever your viewpoint is on that, folks aren't deserving of the harsh conditions that they're in, regardless if it was from their own bad choices. If we are the land of second chances, then we need to really live up to that, right? The lady who speaks every week about, uh, doing the pledge of allegiance. I think for me, what is lost to me on her is the action of what it truly means to be an American citizen. And if you're into all of the, I don't know, I don't have the word hoopla, if you will, uh, accurate. Uh, you know, bring me your huddled masses, bring me your poor, yada, yada, yada. Then you say, for what? Bring them so that they can continue to suffer inside your border? Or because you're gonna take care of them? And we're talking about American citizens here, right? We're not talking about, uh, immigration, challenges. Although some of those folks are likely unhoused also, but we're talking about actual American citizens. So if that is a concern, and that is your, your tipping point, if you will, we can speak the words or we can live the words. And I would just encourage everyone in two thousand and twenty-three to do more to live the words. Sounds like they're coming back.
Recording in progress.
I call the meeting back to order. Uh, we will now go to the council for a motion. I'm gonna ask the Assistant City Attorney to read the motion.
This would be moved to approve settlement with federal weather in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and authorize the mayor to execute a written agreement and substantially the same as in the current situation.
Go first and second.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. I call for the question.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Denver?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
This is our last council meeting of the year. The next council meeting will be held here in the first four meeting chambers on Wednesday, January fourth, beginning at five thirty P M with a remote option. This concludes this, uh, tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned. Have a holiday.
Hey, everyone.
All right. I did want to, uh, capture the entire, uh, city council. Uh, for those of you that this is maybe your only show or React or all things political, uh, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, the one that they all seem to leave out is Happy Quonza. But, uh, yeah. With that, please be careful out there. It's cold. Uh, two-on-one for anyone that is unhoused and needs to make it to the severe weather shelter. G-two stands ready to get them there. Take care of yourself, everyone, and take care of each other. I'm Rwan Cameron. This is The Conduit.